Elder Person Tenorio.
Here.
Battali.
Here.
Wyagle.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum. Please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance which will be led this evening by Alderman Tenorio.
By the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there is no objection, I would like to take the agenda out of order and just go right to the mayor's report. We told Gloria and Kenechny that we were bringing her here for a report on an event that she took part in last weekend at State Fair regarding Creams House, but that was a total lie. Can you come up please?
All the way up here.
All the way up here, yeah.
It's not the city's practice to lie to Miss West Dallas, but so we have some gifts for you and we want to thank you and we have a proclamation and things, but I've gotten to know Glow quite well because it was the rare opportunity to actually have one Miss West Dallas for two years because of the pandemic. Oh, whoa.
So we have opened parks together. We have planted flowers at Burnham Point together. Seen her a lot at a lot of the community events and even though the first year we didn't really get to have a lot of events, but the second year we did and she's done a wonderful job representing the community. So I just want to read this proclamation very quickly and then present you with some gifts and give you an opportunity if you want to say a few words, but you don't have to. So whereas Gloria and Kenechny has honorably served and represented the city of West Dallas for the last two years as Miss West Dallas wherein considering the challenges brought on by the pandemic, a unique opportunity was presented in extending her one year of service into two. Whereas with this extended opportunity, Gloria has over and above submerged herself into the community of West Dallas where she has greeted, met with, and befriended numerous residents and notably participated in essential community events such as the Christmas Parade, Burnham Point Park Dedication, Downtown West Dallas Soup Crawl, Wisconsin State Fair, the West Dallas Classic Car Show, West Dallas West Milwaukee Recreation's Trunk or Treat, the Fourth of July Parade, the Memorial Day Ceremony, and many, many, many more events. And in February 2022, Gloria will pass her title on to a new Miss West Dallas wherein Gloria shall be recognized for her immersion in the community, the people, the culture, the business community of West Dallas. Therefore, may it be known that I, Dan Devine, Mayor of the City of West Dallas, do proclaim Thursday, February 17th, 2022, a day honoring Miss West Dallas Gloria Kenechny, and I invite all citizens to share in the celebration and acknowledgement of Gloria and her positive impact and contribution.
Well, if you can't tell, I was extremely surprised. You and Chelsea, I'm gonna have to talk to you about that because they straight up lied to me about all of this. So that's very surprising. I was ready to talk. I was asking, you know, what I should say and things like that, but thank you so much. I mean, this is really an honor to have been serving West Dallas for over two years now. I was crowned February 4th, 2020, supposed to be only a year, and I was lucky enough to hold this for over two years, done over 50 appearances in the community. So if you are seeing me for the first time tonight, I'll be kind of surprised by that. Passing on my title to the next person, I hope that they get as immersed in the community as I did and while certainly make sure they will and enjoy the time that I've had in this community and I can't wait to do things even after I'm done because, I mean, I love West Dallas and this was the perfect place to spend two years holding a title that was only supposed to be one year. So I appreciate everyone. Thank you so much.
Oh, my goodness.
We have the official.
Oh, man. They won't let me wear that for the pageant though.
Well, he might want to push the boundaries a little.
You want to try and push the boundaries with me? Because I don't.
Oh, no, probably not. Probably not. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, now we will move to item D, public hearings, and we have three items for public hearing this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read item number one.
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of South 77th Street from West Hicks Street to West Beecher Street, West Washington Street from South 84th Street to South 86th Street, and West Mitchell Street from South 92nd to South 96th Street by concrete reconstruction with miscellaneous sidewalk repair, miscellaneous driveway repair, storm sewer, storm sewer relay, sanitary sewer relay, water main relay, building services, and utility adjustments.
Mr. Daniels, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Devine. All right, this is the public hearing for Washington, 77th, and Mitchell, all three streets. Here's the first one, Washington Street from 84th to 86th, just two blocks. Here are some pictures from the street. This street never had concrete. It's a what we call a seal coat road. It was made literally by putting stone down and spraying some tar over the top in 1929. So that's all that's been there for 93 years. We're going to replace it with a actual concrete street that will last 50 years at least. This is the next street, 77th Street from Hicks to Beecher. This actually had concrete in 1924, '27, which is now 98 years old, and then it was resurfaced in 1970, but there are far too many cracks now to try and seal that. So this has certainly served its purpose. And then the third street is Mitchell Street from 92nd to 96th. This is asphalt street that was built in 1955, so that asphalt underneath here is 67 years old. It was resurfaced in 1988, but asphalt tends not to last as long as concrete, so it's ready, obviously, to be done again. And we would replace that asphalt with a concrete road that would last 50 years. And this is what it would look like, typical concrete pavement with new sidewalk, new driveways, and everything under the street as well. And speaking of that, the water main on these streets averages from about 1922 to 1940, so 82 to 100 years old. We will be replacing all the water main. We will be replacing the water surfaces up to the sidewalk area. We will put in copper. I think all three of these streets have lead, so we will be replacing the lead with copper at least up to the lot line. I can't promise that we'll be able to go all the way to the basement yet because we would have to get a grant for that and we haven't gotten that, so stay tuned for that. We'll be putting in new storm sewer and laterals to all the properties in case someone needs a lateral for a sump pump or roof drains. The sanitary sewer on these streets ranges from 1909 to 1931, so it's 91 to 113 years old. This is actually the plan for 77th Street that was signed by my predecessor in 1909. So we will be putting in all new sanitary sewer and the lateral up to the lot line as well. And then new LED streetlights and cable on Mitchell because they don't have it yet, but we have already put in LED lights on Washington and 77th in 2014 and 2016, so the lights, the LED lights that were installed on those two streets would remain. The cost of the project is 3.3 million. That's 1.1 million for pavement, 600,000 for sanitary sewer, 600,000 for storm sewer, 849,000 for water main. And like I said, the streetlights would also be done on Mitchell, but that would be under a separate contract by an electrical contractor. Here's how the project's being funded. I don't know what happened to that pie there, but the special assessments actually only make up about 10% of the total cost. The general fund, you know, the property tax that everyone, the 60,000 people pay, would make up 26%. The water utility fund would pay for the water main, that's 26%. The stormwater fund would pay for the storm sewer, that's 18%, and then the sanitary sewer fund would pay for the sanitary sewer, which is 20%. And these funds are all citywide fees that everyone in the city pays. So 90% of the cost is coming from all 60,000 people in the city and 10% is coming from the people who live there. Here's a sample, a special assessment for a typical 40-foot lot. The assessment rate is $64.39, and that doesn't change no matter where you are. So the cost would be $2,575. If you have a driveway, there would be an extra $8 per square foot charge. So Mitchell Street, I believe, has driveways, so they would get that charge. 77th Street does not. They have alleys, so they would not get the charge for the driveway. The estimates you received in the mail are not bills. The bills would actually not go out until March of 2023, so next spring, a year from now, you would actually get the bill, but then you wouldn't actually have to make your first payment plan if you took the installment plan until December of 2023, so that's 21 months from now, almost two years. So we're giving people lots of time before they would have to make even their first payment. And like I said, you could choose to pay it all off at once. You could go with the five-year plan or the 10-year plan. We do have 4% interest. People want to know why do we have interest? It's because we borrowed the money for this project from municipal bondholders over a 10-year period, and we have to pay those municipal bondholders an interest rate for the use of their money. The city does not make a profit off the interest charged, so we're merely passing along those interest charges that we are paying to the bondholders. But with the 10-year plan, your first year in 2023, your bill would be $361 for the whole year. That's about $30 a month. And then the 10th year, it would be $268 for the whole year. That's $22 a month. So why do we special assess? We have been doing this for over 110 years. State law. State law talks about the residents, property owners, enjoying a unique benefit from having a new improvement in front of their individual property. So that is the legal basis for the whole special assessments. In the old days, people paid up to 100% of the cost, but like I said, on this project, it's only coming to about 10% of the whole cost. And that assessment rate of $64.39 per foot is the same anywhere in the city, no matter how wide your street is or how high the traffic volumes are or how high the actual bid prices are. We're not going to raise it above $64.39. And this has been state law in Wisconsin for over 110 years, and there have been over 100 court cases where people have challenged that, and the judges have always upheld this as a reasonable and fair method to recoup the costs of these projects. And the other reason we do it is because special assessments are the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities, railroads pay their fair share too. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though there are 430 properties in the city that don't pay property tax. So they're all shaded here in this map. That's about 28% of the city's land area that doesn't pay property tax, but they do pay for special assessments. And businesses actually, and corporations pay a high, and manufacturing factories pay a higher rate of $80 to $96 per foot because they have more traffic. 77th, and then the work would begin on Washington and 77th Street because we want Washington to be done before the fair, and that would be a requirement that they would have to have Washington Street all done before State Fair because it's across the street. We're going to hold off on starting work on Mitchell Street until July because we're trying not to interfere with the Little League season, which kind of winds up about July 13th at Reservoir Park. So I met with the Little League this week, and we worked out the schedule with them. Like I said, we're going to have Washington done by the fair. If we start Mitchell late, that's not going to get done until October, November. Hopefully, 77th Street could be done by September because we're starting it earlier in May. There would be a deadline and a penalty if the contractor misses the deadlines, but each street's going to have a different deadline based on the different locations and so on. The best way to find out how things are progressing is to go to our website and sign up for the construction progress report. We'll send you a weekly email that will give you updates on all the projects and who to call, who to call the contractors, and who to call the city, and what the status is and what's happening next. So it's really a lot of information that we highly recommend people sign up for. And with that, I will conclude.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Daniels. Are there any questions on this item from the common council? Seeing none, are there any members of the audience with questions on public hearing number one? Okay.
Seeing none, we will close.
Appreciate everyone's comments, and with that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions on public hearing number three from the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Yeah, Steve, I'd just like to share, I'd be a big fan if we could get that dumpster off the sidewalk there. I would actually think that maybe the applicant might want to consider putting tables on that west side along the sidewalk someday, and I think I'd be amenable to that as one of the aldermen for the area there. But I think moving the dumpster would be key, and I guess it also begs the question of whatever the other two potential uses, or one use, the other two-thirds of the building, where would their refuse end up being? So I think it might be worth the landlord's while to solve that problem once and for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the members of the audience on public hearing number three? Okay, that will close our third public hearing, and we will move on to item E, which is citizen participation. This is the opportunity for the council to receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must give us your name and address for our official record at the podium, and please limit your comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. And the council may not take action or debate topics raised by the speakers, so they cannot discuss due to them not being officially on the agenda. Does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. And looking at item F, our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on page three of your agendas. Item G is the mayor's report, which I kind of already did, and with that I will go to item H. Are there any reports from the alderpersons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderperson Keen.
Just a reminder that this Sunday is the PTA carnival at West Ellis Central from 12 to 4 with prizes and games, food, so if you're looking something to do, come on out.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports? Okay, we'll move on to item I.
Mayor Devine, there's no previous minutes listed.
You are correct. Standing committee reports, we have none. So we will move to item K.
Mayor Devine, items eight and nine will be removed from the consent agenda and referred to Safety and Development Committee. And item 23 on your agenda, at the request of the city attorney, the recommendation will be changed from approved to receive and placed on file as the agent has surrendered the license. So with those changes, I would move for adoption of the committee for the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by alderperson Keen. Any discussion? Hearing none. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenon, favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by alderperson Ranky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are in recess.[245.62]
It didn't work. I think four of them are ashtrays.
How's that?
There you go.
Okay, Public Works will call to order. We are all here, all five of us. We'll start out with item 30, Resolution 2022-0086, Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvements of South 77th from West Hicks to West Beecher.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have one follow-up question. As far as the 92nd to 96th, and Mitchell, Pete, you said you've met with Little League, and what is the estimated date that construction would begin?
Well, the last game is July 13th. I don't, you know, it's gonna take four months maybe to do this, so there may be a couple of week overlap. She, Heidi and Brian Wolf said that as long as we keep all the equipment and pipes and everything off of 96th Street, that that would probably be okay to overlap for a couple of weeks. They're not gonna do any tournaments in the fall like they've done in the past. So they, they were okay, you know, if we started the first of July, and then their last game is the 13th. You know, as long as we stayed out of 96, which we can do, and don't pile anything in the parking lot, which we can do. So they, they were okay with all that. Of course, they asked for some things as long as we were there, but
Of course.
Talk to that later.
Yeah, and we'd have to keep that accessible anyhow because that's we energy's access point.
Yes, that's a part.
Water.
Exactly, water, so 96 shouldn't be affected, but, okay. That was my question, thank you.
Alderman Stefanski?
It's kind of relates to 77th Street, but I've had some neighbors ask when are the roads gonna be replaced from 84th to 76th on Rogers, because that is terrible.
It's, it's on the five-year plan. I wanna say it's in three years, three or four years, it's, it's on the plan.
Okay.
We were gonna do it two years ago, but then we ran out of money, so I had to push it back, but it's coming.
Oh, okay, sure.
Between 76th and 84th.
It's, it's coming.
Okay.
In two or three or four years, I can't remember.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item 33 has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion carries. Item 31, Ordinance 2022-0038, ordinance to create major and minor snow emergencies and establish regulations for each.
So ordinance has been revised of our current snow emergency ordinance, where there would be currently, the director, myself, could call a snow emergency. And usually, anytime that there's a minimum of three inches or more, it would be applicable for me to call a snow emergency. At that time, we would have alternate side parking residential streets, as well as no parking on the main thoroughfares, and those are identified with the ordinance there. So what was new last year is, when I declared a snow emergency, we had alternate side parking, and that would be from 10:00 PM all the way to 3:00 PM the next day. So today, if I would call a snow emergency effective on this date, today's date, I would go to a calendar, or that resident would, and look at the date. It's the 17th. Then, that would have alternate side parking between 10:00 PM tonight, all the way to the next day, till 3:00 PM, on that odd side parking.
And they couldn't park on the even side?
Correct, during that time.
Till 3:00 PM the next day, correct?
So what's changed? It's been proposed that instead of calling, having the director of Public Works call a snow emergency frequently, or infrequent, depending on the weather, knock on wood. This would take out the accumulation amount, and it would make for a snow emergency declared as a minor between December 1st and March 31st. So the patrons, no matter if it snows or it doesn't, or if there's sleet, rain, it's gonna be alternate side parking from December 1st through March 31st. And there, they would, again, look at the calendar, if it's odd or even date, from 10:00 PM to 3:00 PM the following date, would be alternate side parking. So pros and cons to this. As you can imagine, so no matter what the weather is, it's gonna be alternate side parking, you know, for that timeframe. And that, I guess, as a pro, you would have some advantages where maybe the patrons would get used to it during this period of time, from December 1st to March 31st. It's one of those where it's gonna be automatic. It's not gonna be, you know, every, maybe once or twice a month that I would declare a snow emergency, so it's gonna be continual as specified in ordinance as a minor snow emergency. So it'll be continued alternate side parking from 10:00 PM to 3:00 PM. So what that's trying to do, and trying to address, is to have Public Works, their equipment and staff, to be able to address that even side, the non-parking side of the street. And then on the following day, they could address the no parking on the even or odd side there. If we ever get a major snowstorm, then I can still, the director can still declare a snow emergency. What would that affect? It wouldn't affect the residential streets. It would affect the main thoroughfares as defined in ordinance already. And that would be no parking. And that's consistent with what was been proposed previous to this, as well.
So, so we, we're referring to major storms, not the side streets. Right now, we're talking about snow emergency could be called on a major thoroughfares, right?
Right. So if I would declare a snow emergency, it would be for the main thoroughfares, because those are the ones that would be affected at that time. Otherwise, between December 1st, March 31st, it's just like a snow emergency is declared for the residential portion of the streets. And from that time, it's alternate side parking from 10:00 PM to 3:00 PM. So I, I think Alderman Grisham was looking at consistency, and
Correct.
felt that it was going to help with the patrons to understand the change.
Correct. And Mr. Chair, if I may, just to kind of circle back to when we had this discussion last year, before we changed that parking ordinance, one of the things we wanted to implement was this consistency. But at the time, it didn't present the opportunity because it would cost a lot of money in signage. But it just so happens to be that the city signage has changed with the new branding, and it gave us the opportunity to kind of circumvent that cost that would have been to the taxpayers by putting it on our gateway signs. So even though this was something that Alderman Keen and I wanted to do, there was no way to get around it at that time without, I think it was to the tune of almost $400,000. It would have cost for signs throughout the city. So this just really brings that consistency back to what we wanted our residents to, to have in the first place. There's no confusion with our, with enforcement to decide, okay, well, was this a, a snow emergency, was it not? You hear a lot even on social media with people, now what are we doing, and what day is it? I think the most simple thing of what side of the street do we park on gets lost in translation. So that was Alderman Keen, and my objective is we reached out to Dave and asked him, how would this work? Another thing, as a business owner, and what we've been seeing in years past, is snow emergencies are called maybe for a day longer than they may need to be, just so we can clean up the city. And that impacts the businesses directly. So if you have a business on National Avenue, no one can park there until that snow emergency is done. This gives the opportunity for our director and EPW to efficiently do the work they need to in the event of that snow emergency, but still keep that consistency that they can have efficiency just on regular snowfalls as well. I think I explained it the best I can.
Is, okay, thank you. Hang on, hang on. This might be for Rebecca Grill. Is there a, this is just wrote thinking aloud here, is there a database at the police department for all the people that have overnight parking permits where they could just blast out an email saying, we have, you know?
Yeah, we have.
Is there something like that, like a reverse 911, only a reverse parking permit? Hey, it's a snow emergency, so you have no excuses?
We do have, for people that have the permits, but not for people that don't, but
Right, exactly, right.
We, we have them in our new software solution, OpenGov, and we can connect with them either probably if we wanna use a reverse 911, or we could email them or text them.
Right, but just, just the people with parking permits, not, you know, every house in the city?
Correct.
Okay, so maybe, Alderman Stefanski?
Dave, have you talked with the police department as far as how they'll help with enforcement, so that you guys can get the roads cleaned?
Very briefly, and I think it's, Chief Mitchell would be the best to answer that question, but it's always through staffing and the amount of squads that he has available, and other emergencies that they are responding to. So yes, they will, you know, I'm sure, try their best, but again, your contingent on what other emergencies are available, the amount of staff and equipment that's available, and the availability of, you know, the lots to be available to handle that demand if needed, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may add to that, Alderman Stefanski, when we had that initial meeting, Chief Mitchell did have some concerns with the time, because now the time would go to 10:00 PM for enforcement. Right now, we're kind of in a deficit situation with parking enforcement as it is, because we're down parking control officers. And I think a lot of priority calls have been gone out on that. But I know that based on the data that I have since collected looking into this, West Dallas PD does a, a pretty efficient job during snow emergencies itself. But I think that would be an internal issue with the West Dallas PD as to how they're going to shuffle. Or maybe they'll look at bringing these parking control officers on at an earlier time. Right now, they work from, if I think correctly, 3:00 in the morning until 10:30, which is the oddest shift that I can think of. But still the same, that would be an internal thing that Mitchell would have to take a look at. But that was the only drawback that he had brought last year to kind of circle back to that.
And we'll say real quick on that, I didn't, didn't he propose a, adding a third? Because I know we were talking about that here, that he was gonna add a third parking attendant.
And we would have to ask Chief Mitchell, you know, how would that happen budgetary-wise, but also if there's a recruitment for that.
It didn't, okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Zalley?
Mr. Chair.
The
Go on here, he was, he, do that. Okay, quickly.
You know, the fact that is, you know, Milwaukee, they do have, like I said, in downtown districts, you know, they've posted, you know, like I said, from certain dates, beginning the fall, up to March 31st, you know, they have restrictions that way, you know? But the fact that is still, the amount of people, you cannot disregard that. People are still violating, you know, they don't move their car because they're too lazy to, it's full of the noises. Well, I'm moving, I, I go to work tomorrow morning. And the same thing we're facing here in West Dallas. I mean, police have been followed through a lot, really. Tried to issue citations, but sometimes, I mean, cannot be there just the particular hours or so, you know, I mean, two hours. And that's the problem where he is. You know, we can make many changes, really. We, we can do any changes, but still, it's very difficult, really. When we get a snowstorm, and somebody parks on the wrong side of the street, many of them, those people, some of them have no permits. And sometimes, you know, they get cited for. A lot of them, even though they have a permit, they know they're wrong, but I'm taking a chance, you know? That's, that's what will occur in our city, really. It's been happened for 30 years or more, like, something like that, you know? So to make some improvements, I think I'm for, you know, there's nothing wrong. But the fact that is, it takes, it takes a lot to really supervise during the evening hours, every block, you know, I mean, it's, it's not that easy, you know, I mean, for the police department to do that, you know, because there is other concerns out there.
Okay, Alderman Reiki?
Okay, I guess I want clarification, Dave, on, on basically, do I understand this right? Continuous? This snow emergency for the households will take place from December 1st to March 31st? From what I understand, it's gonna be continuous. You're not gonna have to call an emergency for, for residential areas.
Right.
The only time, only thing that'll be affected, it sounds like, the main streets.
You are correct.
Where you will call the snowy emergency, and then no parking is allowed on the main streets at all?
Correct.
Do I understand this correctly?
Yes. So if I declare a snow emergency, the only streets that would be affected by that declaration would be the main thoroughfares.
Right, it sounds like.
As outlined in ordinance.
Yes, and generally, your people do the main streets.
They are the first and priority.
Yes, that's the message I get on my iPad. And I commend you for that. It does, it is very helpful that your people let us know, and I thank you for that. So we know how to answer our constituents when they call us. But I think this will solve a lot of problems. However, with our, the parking people that, that ticket these cars, we only have two in the whole city, don't we?
I'd have to verify that with the chief.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I know we have at least two.
There's two.
We have two.
Yes.
Yes, from what I understand, we only have two, and I don't know how they can ever cover the whole city during a, during a, a really bad snowstorm. It, it would be very hectic, I would think, to have them come and have the police come out and ticket every car. But this might get them in the habit, people in the habit of parking where they're supposed to, and it might, and it might help the problem that we have right now, where people are abusing it. It's hard to say, but I guess I'm willing to try something like this, to see if that would help. Because people get very discouraged when people don't obey the rules, you might say.
Correct. And, Mr. Chair, if I may, just follow up. I guess it's on us, the department, to communicate this. We are working with John Matty and his staff, the Communications Department. They have been in contact with Cale as well, and interpreting this ordinance, and trying to prepare a video, and saying, step one, what's the first thing you should do? Look at the calendar, odd, even. You know, 10:00 PM to 3:00 PM, let's decide I park. Pre, you know, steps to make it easier to, I guess, digest. The second thing I just wanna indicate is, you know, we have about 400, excuse me, 40 lane miles of mains, and we have about maybe 140 lane miles of residential streets. There are going to be cars parked that either us, or, more importantly, the police department is not going to get to. They have other priorities as well. We, when we do contact the police department, it's in those areas that are hindering us the most, the most severe areas. So are we going to be able to identify each and every car out there? No. And as people are going to be able to respond to each and every car, it's just, you know, but hopefully, you know, with this, it'll be under, easier to understand, I think.
Right.
You know, I guess that was the goal that
Exactly, just more consistency and continuity for our residents to understand.
Will signage be permitted in something like this? That you have to put signs, or are you just going to use the media for explaining it to people?
Attorney Decker?
So, the, what Alderman Grisham brought up before, this is essentially the way around having to post $400,000 worth of signs. The state statutes allow any city to create snow emergency regulations and just post at the city's borders that the regulations are in effect within the city. It doesn't say, though, how the city is limited and what it defines as a snow emergency. The city gets to define what that is. So it's gonna be maybe a little unusual for people to see, but if there's a, a very light snowstorm sometime in December, and they're parking the wrong side, they could get a snow emergency ticket for what is essentially a dusting of snow, because the city has declared between December 1 and March 31, any snow is a snow emergency, basically, from the minor side of things. So alternate streets, December 1 to March 31. So that's the reason that no signage would necessarily be put up on streets around the city. You've probably seen in other cities around that those signs are up, December 1 to March 31, no parking in this side of the street. And that is because they are taking a different approach. They're not using the snow emergency route, they're using the contrary to sign, which is also something that we do regularly. We install signs all over for parking rules. They chose to install signs, we're using snow emergency, which is different. The second part, if someone brought this up, and I wanna make sure it's clear. From December 1 to March 31, the way it's currently worded, you would still have to park on opposite sides of the street, alternating on main thoroughfares as well. Is the intent to exclude main thoroughfares from the alternate side parking during a minor snow emergency? If it is, there's an easy amendment that can be made. If the intent is to have alternate sides on main thoroughfares as well, no changes are necessary. So I just wanna make sure that that's clear.
I believe the current is alternating, so I would suggest we leave it the same.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, because I
Good point.
I didn't know if that was clear.
So in essence, the only thing that would change, we'd still do that odd, even. The time would change, obviously, for more efficiency of the plowing operation, and you can call a major and utilize that time for those mains.
Go ahead.
Chair, outside of, from March 31 to December 1, outside of this time, this four-month time limit, if there's a snowstorm in April or in November, the director still maintains the ability to declare emergency, which would cover both major and minor.
Go ahead.
And after this time period is over, whether it's just back to our normal, people have to abide by parking on even or odd sides of the street, right?
Yeah, the normal parking.
Yeah.
Only, only doing night parking.
But, Mr. Chair, if I may, this is part of just having that consistency, too. I think a lot of people will just adapt to it and continue to do that even in the summer months. That's, that's my hope, at least, so there's no major confusion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Weigle?
This is for Cale. That state language, is it root the word emergency?
Yeah.
Okay, because I was thinking if we have a different term for a dusting of snow versus emergency? Because that's what people are gonna, that's what people are saying. West Dallas calls a dusting of snow, a snow emergency. But if there was a different word that we could use?
That, that was the trade-off.
If it's in the language?
That was the trade-off, in exchange for not having 400,000 worth of signs posted around the city, and just using the signs. The language that we're allowed to do that under says it has to be a snow emergency. So that's the reason that we're defining a snow emergency as
So you have to use emergency?
Four months of time.
Yes, it's either that or it was spend $400,000.
Oh.
And I didn't think our residents would appreciate that.
Okay. It's a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I think we have enough discussion already. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 32.
Thank you.
Our Resolution 2022-0087, final resolution authorizing public improvement by concrete reconstruction with
Moved to approve, Zarka?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on item 32? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Then we go to item 33, Resolution 2022-0103, Resolution authorizing the director of Public Works to sign an agreement for professional services with Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated.
Moved to approve, Zarka?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Dave, do you wanna tell us who they are and what they're doing?
So this is the engineering consulting firm that Mike Brofka, water superintendent, coordinates the agreements that are connected or related to the water towers with the cellular equipment that's being placed there. So we are contracting services that we verify the equipment is within the realm that the water tower is able to maintain and hold and as stability-wise, but also the pricing, the revenue that's generated. They have good experience, and they can recommend negotiations of potential revenue increases when the contractual agreements are ready to expire, which we're close on one provider at this time, so.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Stefanski?
So does this cost us money to do this, or does this come out of the negotiations that they do?
This comes out of the there's, it doesn't cost the city. There is a, I, how would you say, a $5,000, $10,000 set fee that the contractor has to pay, and then we get paid the money upfront for using our services that Engineering Consulting per
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, from Public Works.
Let me move on with the License and Health Committee. All the members are present. So we start with item 35, 2022-0132. New Class B tire license and public entertainment permit permit for 6139 West Loy Road, DLLC DBA Cherry Bomb, 6139 West Loy Road, West Dallas, Wisconsin, 523219 Agent J's Staymates. Public entertainment permit to include jukebox, DJ bands, karaoke, patrons dancing, instrumental music, pool table, and amusement machines. That's you, right?
Yes, sir.
So you, you, you're there right now, right? You, you have the
No, the venue's currently closed. It's, it hasn't been operated now, let's say, about 18 months, maybe about a year. Yeah, I'm in there right now, putting a can of paint on the walls. That's what I'm doing, so.
You have another business before?
I have about almost 30 years of experience in the bar business. As far as ownership and holding Class B, that goes back to 2004, in the state of Wisconsin. I've held about 10 Class Bs, all without incident, with one exception. About five years ago, one of my bartenders at one of my bars in Milwaukee caught an underage drinking ticket, so we did what we had to do to handle that, and the city was happy with.
So you don't really have many convictions, or anything that happens prior, so, years back?
Not, not in the bar business. I do have a, I, I know. I have a, I have a, I have a traffic whoopsie, a minor felony from back in 2000 and no, I'm sorry. This goes back to the 90s, 1996.
1996.
1996, 1996, yes. The two lessons I learned from that is, one, be more polite to police officers, and number two, just bite the bullet, and don't take bullets to the offender, hire a good attorney, and so.
Any questions, or question from the
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Road?
Did I hear you say bars I own?
Yes.
How many?
Right now, I have three.
Okay.
Yep.
And I would just like to say, also, I, I'm gonna be voting no on this.
Oh.
Yeah. The CDA, at their Tuesday night meeting, is bumping up big time against the quota. Not even our Not even our own imposed quota, but the state quota. And almost all of them are spoken for already down at the Sona Development area, so that's why I'm voting no.
I would like to say that state law stipulates that the license has not lapsed long enough in order for that to happen, so this actually is grandfather under that. So the license still sits with the address. This is something I'm aware of with regard to other venues in Milwaukee.
No, you said 12 months, and 12 months is our magic number here.
Mr. Chair, may we bring Attorney Decker in?
Yes. Go ahead, that's what I was.
Sure, so if there is an existing license at this location, it would have to be still surrendered then upon approval. There's no actual transfer of license that takes place. This is a new license that would eat into whatever the quota is. If there's a current license there, it would have to be surrendered and it would pry out of back, but I don't know if there's a current license there.
No, I'm pretty sure the license lapsed, but I'm also certain that there hasn't been a 12 months between the laps in my current application. Otherwise, I would never have touched this with a 10-foot pole.
So, I'm not sure if he's talking about...
How do we know that tonight?
Well, so either way, it honestly doesn't matter, because the council could either approve or not approve whether it was within 12 months or not. It's a discretionary call from the council's temp.
Okay.
There's no obligation to issue the license or no property interest currently. This is the moment which property interest is either established or not established. Is do you approve it and establish that interest, and then the applicant would move forward with that property right? Or do you not establish it, and then there's nothing that, no property right is created?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is your district, correct? The 6139?
Yes, my district, yes.
The history on this location, it has been a tavern and establishment?
For a long time, yes, for many years, many years.
And where is your stand on that area and the community?
I do believe, you know, as far as I know, I mean, I've been around a long time, never really have been any complaints, really, in all fairness. You know, whoever the bars owners were before, you know, and I never really experienced any calls to, for any problems.
So if you could freshen my memory, it's not a high residential area, it's by the city yards, correct?
By the city yard.
Okay, so we're not like bumped up to a bunch of residences and...
There is a property directly adjacent to a smaller house.
Yeah, next bar, yes.
And I know there's an alleyway, and there's a number of properties behind that, if I may comment on that. One of my businesses that I have in Milwaukee is off of Brady Street, but it's embedded in residential neighborhood. I could do things to make that venue this popular. No, 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 it's going to stay here, right? I could make more money at it, but I'd rather be a turtle and make money for the next 30 years. Not upsetting my neighbors and being a good neighbor is more important to me than getting that quick flash and walking all the way three years later going, yeah, I got paid. No, I'm not into that. I'm a reputable operator. My reputation precedes me. I would say 10% of the bartenders who actually know what they're doing in this county have been trained by someone that I trained. I've been here a long time, and I'm damn good at what I do. I don't know if I can afford to go into a, I'm not, I'm not a, you know, I don't have access to millions of dollars. I have access to the money that I myself have created through my hard work. So I don't know if I'd be one of your candidates to go into an area like you're talking about. That's, I'm sorry. No, I'm, yeah.
I'm not asking you to go there. I'm just telling you what we're up against.
I wouldn't have the capability to go there. I'm a small business owner, so.
Jay, I appreciate you expressing yourself, and I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No. I will win you over.
Yeah, aye?
Pardon me? I understand why you had to do it, I do, and I will win you over. I'll make the city better, I promise. I'll do my best.
Well, thank you.
The question is, I mean, I understand what all the person wrote says, but I don't really care at this point what we're talking about. The CDA doesn't have nothing, really, to relate to this committee. So I don't care what their feeling is, what their approach is, it's not the case here.
Okay.
What the CDA says, they're not the council people. We make decisions.
And we did, so we will have the vote later.
That's what I say myself.
We still, the fire department, the health department, and building inspection haven't signed off on that, so we implemented the new process that the committee would review, and then it would get held before the council action if the committee wanted.
Thank you for the reminder on that.
Do you want to do that?
It would need to be held until...
Yes.
I think it'd be great.
Until they sign off.
Until they sign off.
Yes.
Which means, if you can explain.
Sure, so what that means is, we would require an inspection, occupancy permit of the standard business things.
Sure.
Being approved at the committee level generally carries a lot of weight with the council, but you won't have your actual license approved tonight. It'd be the subsequent council meeting after you've gotten all those inspections taken care of.
Understood.
But it's approved at this level, but it'd be held at the council until you take care of all the little things that are required before you can occupy with the business.
Gotcha, so the, in Milwaukee, it goes council, and then the holds remain, and then licensing just will not give you your license until. What you're saying is, is that the council will not see it until the holds are off from occupancy?
The council will see it, but will not approve it until those holds are off, correct?
Okay, okay, okay.
You gotta go through all the process. I mean, if you have three bars, you're familiar with that, right?
It's, I've been to the dance, yeah.
So, I mean, you gotta go through all the...
Milwaukee does things uniquely.
That's a nice way to say it.
And I take your words, you know. I never had any complaints from that locations, you know, so that's why I'm in favor, really.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
So I hope you follow those steps.
Absolutely, all right.
Thank you, Jay.
Do you have other businesses?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, sorry.
I own, I own three bars in City, Milwaukee. I also do consulting, so I'm constantly being, people ask for mine, because I've been, like I said, I've been to the dance a couple times, so they ask me.
Do you have good people working for you?
I have great people working for me.
You can't be in four bars all at once.
No, I am, I tell my, I tell my investors, my people that want to get in bed with me, I say, listen, I'm a director, I'm not a manager.
Okay.
And there's a distinction between those two. I'm 48, I just turned 49 years old on Tuesday. I've got a four-year-old at home, and I wake up at 6:00, and I'm in bed by 10:00. So I tell the managers what to do. I am not a manager, I'm a director.
Okay.
If that makes, I know it sounds like semantic wordplay, but...
I guess I'm trying to tell you that we don't want to see you in here again.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to item 36. 2022-0173, 2021, 2023, new operator license, partner request the operator application for Zachary Vanderlinton. Is he here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I got a message, actually, when the council meeting started, from Genos, that forwarded me a message from Mr. Vanderlinton saying that he is at his day job and will not be able to make it to the community tonight, because he had to work late.
What's the wish of the committee member to hold it?
This is his first non-appearance, correct?
This is actually the second time, but he asked...
This is the second time that he's...
Well, if it's a second time, I'd like to see a denial.
I would think he might be working as a bartender. I don't know where he's working, but he probably has a provisional license that...
He had it?
So the, what was related to me is that he's, this is his other job. He's got a day job he's currently working that he's not able to make tonight, because the day job ran late. So this is, the bartender is his night job, and that's why he was not able to make it tonight. He still wants the license, but I'm sure he's operating under a provisional right now. But that's only good for 60 days, so I'm not sure how much longer is left on that license.
He contacted us, so.
He did, he did contact us, let us know.
Yeah, well, it's up to the...
Committee, how you want to handle it.
We could deny it based on his record, too. He's not going to be Citizen of the Year here in West Dallas.
Well, that's what I say, it's not really what you, you know...
I'll, I'll vote for denial based on the applicant's record.
Second.
All in favor of the motion by Alderman Road, up?
Aye.
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 Oppose, the aye, have it.
I said no.
I said, that's fine, that's fine.
41.
41. So we move on to item 37. 2022-0288, 21, 2021, 2023, new operator license, partner request the operator application for Ricky Adamy Jr. He's not here? So what's the...
This is the first non-appearance?
This is the first time, right, for him? What's the wishes?
Moving to hold them?
We can hold it.
Second.
Till the next meeting, that'll be fine. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, the aye, have it. We move on to item 38. 2022-0289, 2021, 2022, new adult oriented establishment operator license application for Penny Vanage.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The next three items we added to the agenda. We were just waiting for someone to return from being on vacation at the police department, so we didn't necessarily have their police background yet. So I believe you received an email with those today. So the people that were not invited, so you could probably either choose to approve them, or if you want them to come in, you could have them, have it held, and we could ask them to attend the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, I have no records, so really.
Other person, Grishon, was that for one or all three?
All three.
All three.
Make a motion to approve all three, thank you.
38, 39, and 40.
Correct.
Right.
I was told, I was here for 40, I was told to come.
Oh, you're here?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Well, then...
You want to do 30 and 39 then?
I don't know.
Yeah, let's do 38 and 39.
But we were just about to approve you.
So, so I heard the motion for...
Do you want to come visit us?
For 38 and 39, for approval, right?
Yes, that is the motion, there was a second by Alderman Ringo.
Okay. So all in favor of the motion, 38 and 39?
Aye.
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 Oppose, the aye, have it. So 40 is here, come right in.
Mr. Byer wants to visit the council, the committee.
No bars.
Good evening, Mr. Byer.
Okay, new application for second-hand article dealer for Derek Byer, right?
Yes, sir.
DBA Lush Life Collectibles, 2075 South Eddie First Street. So the type of business you're buying and selling?
Yeah, I've been mainly doing records and antiques and, you know, kind of art things that are, not like a junk shop, I don't clear out homes or, you know, buy estates or leftovers or things like that. So for this particular business, that what might make it a little different from normal ones of this type is I'm not holding it like regular hours. It's a e-commerce hub, I do very well, you know, online. And so for me, it's an office space, I've grown out of my house. I used to do this full-time, I'm a teacher, I'm ending my contract, so just need to expand and found a nice clean place with decent rent, you know, so I can scale up. I'd like to get out into more things than just, records are kind of my niche, going very well, but...
Well, Derek, you are a working guy, that's why I needed a motion.
Perfect time for the market.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I just have one question. Are you going to be operating regular hours with that being said?
Um, no, basically, I, I work a lot.
You may have just said that, and I just...
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I'm, I will be there most days, just by myself, basically, sorting through, processing. But I, part of my idea is I want the flexibility to kind of shoot out and go get something, or, you know, I will have appointment only, I have regulars already from past years, so they can come on down, pick through, but not, not like open hour kind of thing.
So this is working out of your house?
It has been, oh, yeah, I've been doing it since 2015, and kind of as a gig, and it's sort of taken over my teaching income, and it's just time to take a step. And the Main Street Bounce Back Grant was a big motivator as well, so.
Okay.
Any final question?
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, so this is your house?
No.
No, no, this is a...
I can't picture, I'm not in the fire department, where is 2075, it's like Beecher, right?
It's off 81st, right off 81st and Beecher on the corner.
Okay, okay.
So there's like some apartments above it.
Yes, okay, thank you.
It's in Lutzland.
What's that?
It was a joke. I'll keep that to myself.
I'm a pretty funny guy, except today, last guy that...
So add an emotion to approve.
And a second.
And a second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the aye, have it.
Good luck.
Good luck, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'm a husky, too, I didn't get to say that.
There you go.
Well, the last one is 41, you know, 2022-0276.
Move to place on file?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor to place on file?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor to adjourn?
Beat them.
Aye. Oppose, the aye, have it.
Do we have a...
Man, we're so efficient.
42, item 42.
42.
I didn't run that one.
Advisory, we got all the person ranking.
Advisory come quarter?
Trying to see.
It's going to take care of that big item. Members are present?
Oh.
For standing adjourned, this is number 42.
Yeah, give that mail to her, I mean, I...
Reappointment of Allison Lusanneal and Linda Grouchy to the West Dallas Board of Health?
Both let you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And now, we have again, resolution establishing polling places for elections. I have to thank our city attorney and our city administrator for putting together another suggestion for the committee to consider. So I will ask either one to explain what they came up with.
I think this is the third time that we're before this committee to talk about this. So we've established nine polling places that we would be able to utilize. We've added the Frank Lloyd Wright and then the Mother of Perpetual Health. And so we worked on trying to break them up in a manner that would be easy for us to staff, as well as easy for people to get access to. And we have two options for you to consider. I just want to make a note about McCarty Park. That is a challenging place for people to get to, because there's just street parking. However, we're committed to providing some type of transportation for people that need it from the street to the polling rotation, such as like a cart, a belt cart or something like that, so we can...
He's also going to drive it, right?
Yeah. No, he has to be at Central Count.
Which would be fine unless it snows a ton of inches, then that would not work.
Yeah, well, then, I mean, one of the other things is just a truck or something that we have, so. So that's why we explored McCarty again, and just having nine polling places, it will be helpful to alleviate the wait times for people. Last time at the presidential, we had just had five, and so having nine will help. The difference of the two, I don't know if Kale, you want to go into that a little bit?
Sure, and I can add a little bit more about the difference between five and nine polling places. So the nice thing about it is that McCarty and Mother of Perpetual Health are going to only have two wards assigned to them, they're both new polling places. So by having two wards, it's not going to be too burdensome, hopefully, among the people operating those. Yet just adding those two takes four wards and puts them on some other place, which is a big relief. So as you can see in this one, City Hall currently has four wards assigned to it, still one less than last time. The question that is being presented to the committee is whether you want Ward 10 or Ward 13 to go to City Hall. And you can see on the two examples, the top one, option one, has Ward ten with City Hall and the Ward thirteen then is actually what goes to Central. But if you wanted to, you could swap that and send Ward ten to Central and Ward thirteen to City Hall. Unfortunately, thirteen is just kind of off in the middle of nowhere where it's the only place that really isn't a polling location nearby. So, it could go either way and it's up to the committee to decide how you want to do it. If you make the change from option one to option two, you increase the number of people going to Central and decrease the number of people who would be eligible to go to City Hall by about two-hundred-and-fifty people.
Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm chair. I forgot where.
Raj Stafanski.
Um, I would, I would go for option one because we have more parking available at City Hall than we do at Central and it would alleviate people having to walk so far to go to the polling location at Central. So, my, my favorite would be option one.
Okay. Any other committee members?
Madam Chair.
Something to say?
Is there a preference as you're coordinating all of this that you have a specific recommendation?
Either one is fine. We've talked, talked it over. I think we're, the challenge is, you know, sometimes people are going to have to be closer to a polling location they're going to have to drive across. So, you will be the ones probably getting those complaints more than.
So, we can't put this back on you, right?
Sure.
What would you prefer, Rebecca?
I'll be busy on election day, but.
Right.
Either, either one is fine. The thought process between having the most at City Hall is we have a lot of staff that help with our elections and if they're not busy, they can just go back to their desk and work. So, it really makes me no difference.
Madam Chair, just to go ahead and call some of the complaints you might get, Ward eleven is going to be the most interesting one because that is assigned in this version to Mother Perpetual Health, which is on Lincoln and one hundred and second. But as you can see, Central is actually located in the eleventh ward, but no one from the eleventh ward will be voting at Central.
Ouch.
So, it's just a, it's a geographic situation. It's the reason that it just doesn't work out is because Central is needed to take on either thirteen or ten. So, we just ran into that, that problem. So, that'll be the, the only spot that I saw on the map that might be some confusion was that spot. So, that'll be, I think, something that just be prepared to address that.
Okay, any other comments?
I, I did.
Hold my role.
Um, McCarty Park, they, a lot of times it parked right up at the building, you know, they just kind of drive down that asphalt. And I know, is there something we could put like just for handicap access only or?
We could work with the Parks Department to do something like that, but we're fine with providing that service if that's not available. Also, we have curb side service for those people that can't get out of their vehicles. A lot of people use that in the presidential because they found out if you did that, you didn't have to wait in line. Is that a while?
Well, we won't tell anybody.
No, not anyone. There's only ten people watching, so.
Right.
And now with nine polling locations and voters spread out a lot more, I don't think you're going to see the lines you saw.
No.
So, you will contact someone at the county?
Yeah, we'll work with them.
Because even, even the baptisms and events that they have on weekends, they're, it's just packed with cars, so.
We also don't want someone getting injured when they're walking there.
And I've seen that almost happen as well.
So, we'll weigh those risks.
Okay.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve option one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor of number one?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Good evening. We'll call the common council back to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Tenorio.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Wrote.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Ten present.
We have a quorum. We will begin with the Administration and Finance Committee and I will ask the clerk to read out that report.
The Administration and Finance Committee recommended adoption of items twenty-six and twenty-seven and approval of items twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Mayor Devine, I move for approval of the committee report.
Thank you, Alderman Haas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Public Works Committee. I'll ask the clerk to read out that report.
The Public Works Committee recommended adoption of items thirty through thirty-three.
I move an approval of the committee report, Mayor Devine.
Thank you, Alderman Wrote. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing no discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. And then, we have the License and Health Committee. I'll ask the clerk to read out that report.
License and Health Committee recommended, recommended holding items thirty-five and thirty-seven. Items thirty-eight through forty were granted and item forty-one was placed on file. Item thirty-six should be read out separately.
It was a split vote, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved for approval based on the license committee reports.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries and now we have item thirty-six before us.
Item thirty-six was recommended for denial, four to one vote based on the police report.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
If I just may say, the gentleman who was supposed to appear tonight, it was his second non-appearance, however, he did call and we could hold it and that was the reason behind my vote.
You were the one, I'm assuming?
I was the one.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Weigel.
I, I guess I'm confused on the, would he probably, can somebody just fill me in on how bad this person's record is, where they have likely been?
Alderman Wrote.
Mayor Devine?
Elder Person.
Attorney Decker, aren't we supposed to base it on if it's on the full police report, if it's alcohol related?
Substantially related.
The standard would be that you should base it on any type of arrest or conviction record that substantially relates to license activity. There is no definition or hard description of what that means. It's up to the council to determine that. In this case, if you feel those violations substantially relate to the license activity of being a bartender, then you are able to vote no. If it does not substantially relate, then you must vote yes. In this case, the individual's record was published at the committee, but he did not appear for any questioning because he just wasn't here tonight. And he did notify the clerk's office, but like I said, he was not here.
And this is the second non-appearance?
Correct.
Just in case this is a tie, can I ask how long ago this was? The record?
The record is, last was two thousand and eighteen. Three probation violations in twenty-seventeen, operating after evocation twenty-sixteen, burglary twenty-sixteen, and damage to property twenty-seventeen.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine?
Elder Person Grisham.
My reasoning behind voting no also was I would have just made a motion to hold and if committee had so chose to ask this individual to come in for explanation, give them the opportunity. Had he not called, I would say denial, even if it's the second time. But I thought we'd give them an opportunity if that's the case.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Weigel.
I'm confused. This was his second non-appearance, which is a basis for denial, but he did call?
Right before the meeting, I guess.
Just before the meeting. Attorney Decker?
I received the message actually right when the meeting started, but I don't know when it was sent to Jenny in the clerk's office.
Mayor Devine, it was my understanding as it was explained that his, this would be his second job, his day job kept him detained, so that's why he couldn't make it to the meeting this evening. That was the explanation.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
One more question, Mr. Mayor.
Go for it.
Is there a third option? Approve, deny, or hold?
Well, if this motion fails, then it'll be back. The motion to deny fails, then we'll need a replacement motion, I believe.
And then, we can make a motion to hold.
To hold till the next meeting or to approve or give them another chance to come in if it's held till the next meeting? Am I? Go ahead.
If this motion would fail, I'd recommend a motion to refer back to License and Health.
So, a, so a yes vote is for denial?
The motion is to deny.
Denied, yes.
Yes, so a yes vote is to deny. Any other discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Elder Person Tenorio.
No.
Vitale.
No.
Weigel.
No.
Grisham.
No.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
No.
Lysick.
No.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Six, or four in favor, six opposed.
So, motion fails.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I move that the item be referred back to License and Health Committee.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to refer it back? Can I do a voice vote on that? All in favor, every sentence back to committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the item is back to License and Health at the next meeting. Thank you. And now, we have the Advisory Committee. I'll ask the clerk to read that out.
The Advisory Committee recommended approval of item forty-two and adoption of item forty-three with option one map.
Mayor Devine, I move approval of the committee report.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Wrote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Past my bedtime.
I thought you were pondering the next date. We have to adjourn till. Motion carries.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I move that we adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, March first at seven P.M.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
All right. So, you're going.